All right, I'm going to call this priority setting meeting of the Concord Chamber of Commerce to order. My goodness.
Wait, what?
Start over, start over.
I might be in the wrong spot.
The Concord City Council. They all begin with Cs. They all begin with Cs. Tim Sink is sitting down there in the audience. Why? Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the rolling room?
Absolutely. Counselor Brown, here. Mayor Champlin, here. Counselor Fennessy, present. Counselor Foote, present. Counselor Grady Sexton, here. Counselor Horn, here. Counselor Keach, here. Counselor Kretovic, here. Counselor Kurtz, here. Counselor McGlothlin, here. Counselor McInnes, here. Counselor Schlosser, here. Counselor Schultz, excused. Counselor Seku, here. And Counselor Todd, here.
Very well, thank you. Before we get started, I just want to make an announcement. Some city councilors and others in the community have approached me about an article in this morning's Concord Monitor which indicated that Concord and Bow were entering into a arrangement, an agreement, a deal to extend Concord Water Service to Bow Junction. That is not true. That is not the case. The, as many of you do know, the city is engaged in a study. We received a federal grant to conduct a study on the feasibility of water sharing. We've had interest expressed by Bow over a number of years. The city of the town of Pembroke also has expressed some interest, and so we're looking at the possibility of taking a regional approach to water supply. But at this juncture, there is no agreement because, quite simply, this body would have to agree to approve any such agreement. And as all of you know, that vote has not taken place. So I just wanted to clarify that so that it goes on the record, so that everybody understood that that is not, in fact, the case. Bad news. In any case, welcome to this morning, this evening's, I've done it twice today, welcome to this evening's priority setting session. By way of explaining kind of the process we're going to go through, Mayor, I have developed a list of priorities which I'm going to present to the City Council. Once I finish going through, walking through those priorities, I'll open the floor for city councilors to comment or make suggestions, and we'll try to arrive at a consensus. Any list of priorities that we develop tonight will have to be voted upon by the City Council in session. So that's how we'll proceed this evening. For the general public and for Concord TV, my list of priorities is up on the screen on the side. And also for members of the public, there are copies of, printed copies of my list of priorities on the front table, I believe.
Can I have that, or on the end of the back?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So just to walk through the priorities that I've drafted, they're broken up into specific areas with some subbullets beneath them. First area of focus is finance and technology. Under that, I've placed balancing the budget, maintaining our AA+ bond rating, which is critical for our bonding of city projects, to maintain compliance with our fiscal policy goals, but with particularly being attentive to our debt ratio. Enterprise, the enterprise resource planning implementation, that's essentially our tax billing revamp. Assessing full measure and list, that's the reassessment, the interior reassessment that we're engaging in. Pursue federal state funding wherever we can to reduce the pressure on property taxpayers. And cost containment, particularly in terms of the health insurance costs that we are required, or that we're experiencing in providing competitive healthcare to our employees. And finally, ongoing technology and infrastructure projects. In the organizational area, recruitment and retention, which we've discussed several times already this year. Class and compensation study. Those of you who are returning, members of the council, know that we voted on this during the last council to authorize a compensation study and class study for our employee wages. I think we have not done that in at least a decade. It was long overdue. So that is in motion. Our DEI JB initiative and solid waste contract implementation, for those who, obviously, I think everyone at this table knows, that we signed a new contract with Casella, and we have a phased implementation of that contract. The area of housing and homelessness, we, I'm suggesting that we continue to enter into public-private partnerships to support housing projects of all, of all levels, market rate, workforce, and affordable, using the available tools and programs that we have to support partners in developments and developers. These include RSA 79E, community tax relief incentives, which we've used a number of times in other various projects, community development block grants, revolving loan fund programs, sale of city-owned development sites, and surplus real estate for housing development, and making zoning amendments. In the area of transportation and utility infrastructure, I'm proposing we fully fund the highway and sidewalk program. We move forward with our new airport terminal building. I think you all know that we receive significant federal funding for that project, and also will be receiving state funding. That will appear also in economic development. The Loudoun Road Bridge project, which is on the horizon, I think we all know that that's a red-listed bridge, and that replacing it is important. Also, our Heights Sewer Improvement Project, we've discussed in the past that the sewer system up there was designed and developed for the Steeple Gate Mall and not for the additional development that has taken place over the years. And with the expected addition of 600 or so housing units by Onyx and the redevelopment of the Steeple Gate Mall, upgrading that sewer system is critical. Also, the Broken Ground Water Booster Pump Station, reconfiguring the P Square, the I-93 project, which may or may not include the deck park or bridge, but also including the extension of Store Street up to Constitution Avenue, which is a long-term plan of the city, the ROI Properties Development at Black Hill Road off of Manchester Street, and the state parking garages. And it's plural because the state will be building a new parking garage right outside our windows here, and we're hoping to work with them to eliminate the existing parking garage over Store Street, which will allow us to start to address our long-term goal of redevelopment along Store Street. Under community and economic development, I'm proposing that we adopt interim zoning amendments, initiate our master plan work, and then address Concord Next 2.0. We're a bit behind the curve on our master plan, and I think that's really important for us to focus on that. Implementing the Economic Development Advisory Committee, that will be on our agenda next Monday night. Also overhaul our economic development website and digital marketing package, and embark on destination marketing. Again, as mentioned previously, move forward with the new airport terminal and also the Heights Sewer Project. Also pursue public-private partnerships at the Steeple Gate Mall, on Phoenix Hall, Monitor Way possibly, ROI Properties project, which I also already mentioned at Black Hill Road, possible Rivco redevelopment in Pennacook, and the Concord Stables project, that's in partnership with the Abbott Downing Society to convert that into an Abbott Downing coach and wagon museum. Also, placemaking, gateways, community art, and possible murals, excuse me, murals, regulatory amendments, which we initiated last month, looking at where charitable naming would be allowed, and also initiating the mayor's business visitation program. Under energy, environment, sustainability, we're looking next week at possibly adopting community power, where we need to look at completing our solar arrays at the old Turnpike Road landfill, as well as at the Hall Street wastewater treatment plant. We have almost completely converted all of our streetlights to LED, cost-effective and also energy-efficient. But we do have decorative, our decorative lights, which have not been converted, and so I'm proposing that we complete that project with the conversion of our ornamental street lights. We also, I'm suggesting or proposing that we pursue electric vehicle charging stations in our parking garages, on our surface larks, and possibly at our parks. We will continue to look to diversify our energy sources and with an eye towards sustainability, and also continue to focus on street trees and open space preservation. In public safety, I think it's no surprise that we're going to be talking about a new police station. Also, we will be doing some, looking at City Hall campus, the City Hall Campus Master Plan and schematic design. We worked on that, particularly if the police station is relocated. We have a whole building over here to our south that we'll have to look at and determine what the future uses of that are, and how we can best use that additional space to the benefit of the public for the City Hall campus. We also need to look at fire gear replacement. We all know that our firefighters are using turnout gear that was made using PFAS chemicals, the forever chemicals, which has caused healthcare concerns for our firefighters. They are carcinogenic, and so we need to address replacing the PFAS gear with non-PFAS gear. Also, we should be looking at building out our police department's social worker staffing. You remember that we hired two positions for police social workers. The master's level position allows us to also bring in interns to build out more staff in that area, and I think that's very important. Also, continue our focus on community policing, and look at fire department equipment replacement. This would be the large vehicles and other equipment other than the turnout gear. And finally, in the areas of recreation and leisure, we have a full plate to complete the construction of our new Canal Street Riverfront Park in Pennacook, to complete the inclusionary playground at White Park to replace the Monkey Around Playground, to complete the new Pennacook Library and Activity Center, and also as part of that to sell the former Pennacook Library site at the old police stations, at police station at 3 Merrimack Street. We've already started and had public meetings on the Memorial Field design and our partnership with the Concord School District to upgrade and correct the flooding and the ponding at Memorial Field, excuse me. We have to continue with the process to look at lights at each park. Also renovations at Bicentennial Square. The Merrimack River Greenway Trail is an ongoing project. We are engaged in acquiring the railroad right-of-way, working with New Hampshire Department of Transportation, that would allow us to extend from Porshoe Pond up to the border with Boskelen. But also, we have work on the horizon for the agricultural field section of the trail from Terrell Park over to Loudoun Road. As you know, the Beaver Meadow Clubhouse project is going back to the drawing board, but that will come back to us in some form. We've already talked around this table about the garrison pool replacement. We have the continuing development of Terrell Park over off of Manchester Street, and the design of the Kiwanis Park over at the arena. So those were some of the major initiatives that I thought should be on our list, and I'll open the table to comments and discussion. I'm sorry, unless the city manager wishes to make any amendments.
Will be back up there?
Yeah, yeah, come on, yeah, why don't you? Thank you. I'm sorry. Counselor Grady Sexton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for this very comprehensive overview. I would just suggest that we make edits in two sections, and I brought this up as part of the ongoing discussions that the Public Safety Advisory Board has been having, but in particular, the third bullet, housing homelessness, I would just suggest that we might add something to the effect of sort of create efforts to quantify the scope of our homelessness problem in the community. I think it's very difficult to solve a problem unless you truly understand its breadth, and I don't think that we have a good handle on homelessness issue in general, what those numbers look like, where the unhoused originate from, where they're seeking services from. So I think if we could try to really kind of quantify all the issues around this, we'd be in a better position to work together to solve this problem. I'd also suggest adding an effort to enhance our relationship or our better coordination between the county and the state in terms of the efforts. I think that I routinely hear that we're unable to address a particular issue with an encampment because it is state land, or it's owned by private businesses, and I think we would benefit from some better coordination. And I think that issue brings me to the public safety bullet point, and I think that we might want to put something next to build out police department's social worker staffing, which I strongly support, by saying, and any funding options, because I think that if we're able to sort of quantify the issue of homelessness, and we're, and we do find that people are originating from, that are living in encampments or seeking services are originating from places like the state hospital, or the state prison, or the county jail, that it would be really helpful for those entities to help fund social work services so that we can ensure that people get the housing that they desperately need and deserve.
Thank you, Counselor. I was going to recognize you.
Thank you.
Counselor Schlosser, because, and I'll just preface this by saying, Counselor Schlosser has been working on building out, and I think he might be able to address some of that.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Grady Sexton. I'm learning the protocols. Thank you, Your Honor. So yes, in terms of homelessness, we've talked about this on the Public Safety Committee, and the Steering Committee, to monitor the city's plan to end homelessness, would like to have a more, would propose that we have a more specific goal or priority around homelessness, and it's really aligned with what you just described in terms of better data, better quantification, and potentially bringing in additional resources. But I don't know how you want to entertain suggestions, because I have, I mean, the proposal is to advance the city's plan to end homelessness through 2025. The council will work through the Steering Committee, that's the Steering Committee to monitor the city's plan to end homelessness, it's sort of a mouthful, to strengthen the coordination required to make measurable progress, and we've even conceptualized some action items, including some of the ones you suggested about quantifying it. So I would propose that we try to clarify that we really have a goal to prioritize progress on this problem.
And I think, and I think that that's appropriate, and I think that I've seen the bullet points. I think essentially what Counselor Schlosser is proposing is that broader goal, but then there are specific goals for the Steering Committee, which do encompass much of what you're saying, particularly in terms of, yeah, very much aligned, particularly quantifying, you know, and also identifying state-county partnerships, at least county partnerships, I think was specifically mentioned in that. And I'm sorry, Counselor, I should have asked you to bring a copy.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize what the protocol was to offer suggestions, but I do have this, if we can make copies of it, if that's helpful for people, but.
Yeah. But I think that, again, I think that the Steering Committee is gearing up to, to address many of those points, and there'll be, one of the goals is to report regularly to City Council in order to keep us apprised of how the progress, how they're progressing. Yes, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor, and for the extraordinary work that you're doing to lead these efforts. I would just say that I think we're on the same page, and I think it would just be helpful to, to capture that within this document, if this is the document that we're working off of.
I would consider that. I felt it was a little bit fun and grain. I think we need to make sure that the language indicates that it's the Steering Committee that's working on that, and that the council will support that work.
Then perhaps we could say something, may I, sorry, follow-up. I might suggest that we say something specific to that, that the council, you know, may look toward the Public Safety Advisory Board's recommendations, as well as the committee that you're working on, yeah. But I do think, the thing that I really love support in But I do think, the thing that I really love support in getting into this document is the idea of quantifying the scope of the problem. I don't see that reflected in here, and I don't think that's too granular. I think that's a really big project that we should be pursuing.
I think that we can easily add that quantifying language, don't you, Counselor Schlosser?
I agree.
If others support that as well.
Is there consensus that that would be a good thing?
Yes, absolutely.
Super. Thank you. Counselor Todd?
Just while we're on the subject, Your Honor, and first of all, I do want to thank you for this very comprehensive overview you provided to us. I just want to say I agree totally with Counselor Grady Sexton's comments on this, and I think also, just if I could add to that, if we could look for opportunities to engage with the public about, once we've collected that data and information, I think there's a lot of confusion in the public about this issue overall, and I think it would be a great opportunity for us to be able to provide that information once we've got it together so that folks will become more informed.
That's a great suggestion.
I just wanted to say, I will second that because, thank you. No, I thought you would say.
I recognize the mayor, Pro-Town.
Thank you. Thank you for the detailed priority. I think this, we have a lot to work on, and this is very detailed, but when it comes to the homelessness, I think those are important to quantify, because we cannot look at what we have done, the progress, if quantification is not there. And Jim and I had the honor to participate in a conference, and the entire conference really focused on those, how Boston has done an amazing job on that. But also, I think, when it comes to the public, because this is, as you said, very critical moment, but I think it's good to add educating the public on that issue as well. I have a question, because you put market rate, workforce housing, and affordability in parentheses, and I see 79E to be, because I think many often time, people, when they hear market rate, workforce housing, affordability, are a little confused. So to see them in parentheses here, I think especially for developer that come forward looking to get the 79E, we have to ask them what they see. Of course, housing is always good, but when we are talking about workforce housing and affordability, we have to really try to find out what that meant to them and what their availability, because now when we talk about affordable, what is affordable even to define? So to see those in parentheses, I think it's good, but I will caution them going forward when a developer is in front of us.
Unless I'm mistaken, thank you, thank you, Mayor Pro-Town. Unless I'm mistaken, there are certain statutory definitions of affordable work and workforce housing, and of course, market rate is whatever the market will pay. I think that what I'm trying to emphasize, what we're trying to emphasize there is that all forms of housing are important right now, and not just one area. So every opportunity we get to develop, you know, any form of housing, whether it's affordable, whether it's workforce, or whether it is market rate, is important in order to increase the housing stock.
Indeed.
Counselor Kurtz?
Thank you, and thank you for this. It's a lot to take in, so I appreciate the overview. I am excited to hear about the proposals to be more specific about quantifying the problem and also looking to the two of our existing committees, and I want to second what Counselor Todd said about emphasizing communication with the public. I think we hear already that great work is happening, and I think it's very important that we have some mechanisms to really let folks know, because we are hearing their concerns, and we want them to know the good work that's happening. I wanted to piggyback, because the conversation sort of transitioned to different kinds of housing, and I had starred zoning amendments at the bottom of the housing and homelessness bullet, and I had also, I'm very interested in hearing more about this interim zoning amendments under Community and Economic Development. I'm particularly curious about interim zoning and then the master plan update. I invested in supporting city staff in making strides, in getting to some sort of place with the proposed zoning that's been languishing for a while, which I do not say languishing is any sort of criticism of city staff. I know it's a very long process, and I know there remains work to be done. I'd like City Council to prioritize whatever assistance city staff might need to get zoning to a place where both homeowners, individual residents, and developers can know what our policies are, make decisions, and I hope that the zoning we adopt would be supportive of addressing housing and homelessness. I guess my question is, I am concerned about putting the master plan before the zoning, because that is just a very important but very lengthy process that I fear pushes any sort of decision-making on zoning out another several years.
I think what I'm proposing is more of a phased approach, so that we can address this, and the city manager and I have had extensive conversations. Would you like to address that?
So the way, excuse me, the way I had understood this was proposed from the mayor is that there is zoning amendments that need to take place now. That's why it's listed first.
Got it.
Then you, the master plan update would be something that would take, it usually takes about two or three years.
Right.
To get through, if you really do a community outreach piece. And then a Concord next 2.0 would be, in reality, the zoning piece, there's a subdivision piece in the site plan regulations, I think you need to tackle all of those. That is going to take some time, too. So, but those should be derived out of the master plan, so, but if you're going to wait for that, then it's even longer, which is why you have to do zoning amendments now. So the question's going to be for the City Council, these are policy questions, are you doing zoning changes now that are going to affect existing neighborhoods, or is this going to be, give you a perfect example, would be up by the Modern Way property. That's industrial. Do you want to rezone one of the last large pieces of industrial property that you have forever to be no longer industrial, to be residential? That's a policy question. And, or are there, is there a mixed-use type of gateway that could go in there, but what do you want next to, for housing next to an incinerator? That you want to be stronger as time goes on? You don't want that to go away, because there's a lot of big tax revenue there for Merrimack Valley School District in particular. So, so to me, this leaves it open for you to focus on all those pieces, but I think you need to really focus on the interim zoning amendments soon. But then again, you need to reflect on the fact that you have three, up to 3,000 housing units currently in process right now. How much is zoning a problem for housing to come forward? Or is it the, is it the supply chain issue? Or is it labor? Or is it a lot, there's a lot of other issues here. It doesn't appear that major affordable and workforce housing projects are being limited by zoning. When I look at 3,000 projects, 3,000 units somewhere in process now, but I think there are existing neighborhoods that could use accessory dwelling unit proposals, that's the interim.
Great.
But, but one of the difficulties the council has had in the past is when you stop proposing these specific changes to existing neighborhoods, that's when you're going to hear back from those neighborhoods saying, why don't you try somebody else first?
I'm aware.
And so be ready for that. But it's coming. Like when we tried to do, for example, when we tried to do a shelter for one year over at, well, St. Peters and at the, where the Concord School District is right now, don't you think the people really turned out in those neighborhoods and said, not here, not us? And so you've got to be ready for that, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you very much, and I thank you, Your Honor, for this, as Counselor Grady Sexton has said, very thorough. And I want to echo my colleague's comments about how important it is to quantify, collaborate, and engage with the public, and I have three things that I'd like to touch on. In engaging with the public, I would like to modify the section where it says garrison park pool replacement. I would just like us to look at garrison park pool. I've been reaching out to some of my constituents in that area, and I've been hearing back. So I'm looking forward to having a public meeting and hearing more from those constituents, because it is about one mile walking to a manufactured housing unit. So that is the closest recreational space for them, and I want to make sure that I hear from them and can speak on their behalf. The second thing that I'd like to talk about.
Counselor, may I?
I'd just like to change the language on recreational leisures. Instead of garrison park pool replacement, just garrison park pool consideration.
How about if we just say garrison park pool?
Perfect. I love it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So unless you want to do something different than you've done for the last 25 years, these bullets are generally ideas that come up, that may or may not be focused on by the City Council or be reported on as time goes on. So just, just so, I know you all understand it, but so the community understands, when you get to, you know, sale a city-owned development sites and surplus real estate, you may not have any, but, or you may have some. So you, so these are just examples of when you're talking about that goal itself, you can have specifics to talk to. It does not mean that you're going to do those. It's just the, you know, continue to enter into a public-private partnership to support housing, blah, blah, blah. It's not, it's not the individual bullets, because that's something you're going to have to decide as time goes on.
Thank you, thank you. So we'll leave it as just the park pool. The second item, when we talk about collaboration, I would like to actually remove a bullet under transportation and utility infrastructure, Broken Ground Water Booster Pump Station. This is directly related to the school being located at Broken Ground. As we know, the school board has had informal meetings with the administration. They have not had any formal meetings. There have been no public meetings with City Council. We talked during Transportation Policy Advisory Committee. There are no new developments in that area that necessitate a booster pump in that area. We don't even know if the school is likely to happen, because they are learning that $70 million is no longer going to be available to them. So I do not want to make this a priority that we track when they're not even sure if they're building anything within the next two or three years. So I would like to remove that, and instead, I would like to, and in looking at Memorial Field Design, I think we should focus on collaborate with the school board, because I think that the issue of the school location is a much bigger and more impactful decision than Memorial Field. And during our Transportation Policy Advisory Committee, this is going to my third point on quantifying, complete streets, I was in the working group that looked at complete streets, and it ties in with the master plan. We need to quantify what neighborhoods need sidewalks, need public transportation. In looking at our master plan, it was done in 2008, so I would like to emphasize the master plan and prioritize that, because our transportation, we have these 3,000 new units in development, we need to make sure that those folks have access to resources. Counselor Schlosser pointed out that folks in Langdon Ave don't have a crosswalk to Main Street, so I think we have to really quantify, look at the neighborhoods that are disadvantaged. Part of the complete streets master plan examination that my group went through was scoring, looking at our complete streets policy and rating it against others, and we, it was a 19 out of 100 points, because we need to actually look at those community members that don't have access currently to any kind of transportation. So I'd really like to emphasize master plan, complete streets, as a way of addressing equity and sustainability. In looking at, in comparing the 2020 census data, which the master plan is based on, and the 2008 master plan, that was based on the year 2000, in that one, currently, we have more actually disadvantaged folks, or I'm sorry, disabled folks in Concord than most of New Hampshire. That's what the 2020 census says. We also have a greater number of people not born or in New Hampshire living in Concord. We have about 85% that are identified as white only. So I think the master plan, complete streets, I would like to elevate that as its own item so that we can track it quarterly.
Mr. City Manager, if I'm not mistaken, any work we did on the master plan would be tracked on the quarterly report, would it not?
It could, yes. So traditionally, the master plan process, I believe under the RSAs, is run by the planning board, so, and it is not approved by City Council, if I remember correctly, Matt, right? So, but yes, this is something we could bring to you to make sure, and you do have a rep on the.
Yes.
Planning board. We could, we could bring one of our updates come along, too, so it'd be good that way the public would be aware of it at the same time.
Sure. And the booster pump, is that solely based on whether or not there's a new school up at?
I had thought the school was trying to piggyback on our project, so to speak. That project's been in the capital budget for some, do you recall? Yeah. Because I think, if I recall correctly, folks up in that area of Concord have, for a number of years, half a dozen at least, had water pressure problems ever since some of the...
Profile Ave was built.
Profile Ave was built.
Correct.
So that's why we were doing, that's why we had put that project in there, is to handle, you know, the nate fantasies of the world, you know, type of thing. And, you know, the water, the water pressure problems up there. And I think that's what it was. Now, I think it is necessary for the school district to have that in there, and the engineers for the school, who are working for the school district, have contacted the city and said, tell us about what you're doing, what you're proposing to do up there, because we need to know that so we can make our school work.
So I did read, you're correct, and.
Counselor, Counselor Brown?
May I?
Yes.
Thank you. Our engineer, Mr. Bazanson, he did produce a report that is available on the middle school projects, and in it, he says that there is pressure, there is plenty of pressure now. It's if the school moves up there that they will need that pump station, and before the council considers that or makes that a priority, I think we need to have them sit down at the table and talk with us. I do not want that on our list of priorities.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would urge that we keep that on the priorities. This has been, this has been a project that's been in the capital improvement for years. I don't have an engineering degree. I'll defer to the engineers. This has been on the, on the table for a while, and I just have to point out that I think it's disingenuous to bring it up as a way to block the middle school expansion up there. Let's talk about city projects and leave the schools of the school and your own personal opinions out of this, and talk about whether truly water is needed in a part of the city, I'll add, that probably will see the most residential expansion than any other part of the city going forward. So let's, let's make this an engineering decision and not a political decision.
Counselor, Mayor Pro-Town?
I just wanted to say that, thank you, Honorable. You came here to explain to us, because I think the city manager said this has been going, and we are talking about being diversifying the offers, and I think every corner of our community needs those pressure, water pressure, but I would love to hear how long this has been and why it's important, because I do agree with him that we should not attach water pressure to a schooling, because everybody, every citizen deserves that, so.
Mr. Walsh?
Certainly, so as the manager mentioned, this has been a problem for a long time. It goes back to when Profile Ave was developed in the late 90s, early 2000s. It is something that, although it's called the East Concord Pump Station, the pressure issues that are associated with that neighborhood, because water pressure was not handled maybe properly at that time, 25 years ago, bubbles up, if you will, no pun intended, throughout the rest of the system. So we do have issues with pressure elsewhere that are not necessarily in East Concord that in some form, shape, or manner go back to that particular challenge that the entire water system has. There's been a project in the capital budget, and I seem to recall sending all of you an email within the last two months or so about this, and it was in the capital budget, I want to say, for more than a decade, and it's been in there for a while. I think the school district could figure out how to make their project work without the booster station. It would be logical to, if a partnership could be struck, to think about that, if that was going to be a possibility, but regardless, it's not an improvement specifically to make any development at the school property in Broken Ground viable, it's really to address this pressure issue that's been out there really for 25 years, so.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Counsel Fudd?
Yes, thank you for putting this together. I am an engineer. I also, I think, knocked on every door on Profile Ave last fall, some were in Ward 10 and some were in Ward 9, as I learned afterwards.
I told him, no, don't go there, it's not your ward.
And I appreciate the depth. And I appreciate the data-driven approach on all of this. And I think to Counselor Brown's point is that, you know, as I said, I see, every time I go to a public hearing, recreation, transportation, et cetera, et cetera, I just see dollar signs flashing. And I, and I guess, you know, there's a lot here, and I'm not, we really need to quantify this and have people understand. We mentioned about data and, you know, Profile Ave has been there for 30-plus years. And I think that, you know, if it's something the city has been working on and it has money in the, in the, has been putting capital reserves towards, that's, that's good. But I, it just seems coincidental to me that all of a sudden, we're really pushing it in 2024 as a result of what's happening with the school. And, and to go along with that, we talked about homelessness and everything that goes along with that. And I, you know, when we had the public safety meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we're talking about data, and I'm still so grateful everybody's data-driven in this room, really refreshing to me, is that, you know, I hear people saying, we're not doing enough for the homeless. Well, the fact of the matter is, you know, this, this city and this board has on numerous occasions is spending money with these, with nonprofits. And it'd be interesting to know what that cost is too, so people can understand that the city really is trying to help those that are homeless.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Fennessey? Did you, I'm sorry, I thought you had your hand up.
Thank you.
You did not have your hand up. All right. Counselor Grady Sexton?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to revisit the public safety bullet point again. It sort of strikes me that we are not explicitly saying that we're going to work to improve public safety. And I think that that's really critical because I think we need to be honest with ourselves that we have ongoing and increasing safety, safety issues and crime. I know our police department is completely overtaxed. I also hear routinely from small business owners, local merchants, about their property being stolen, you know, custom cabinetry equipment that is irreplaceable being stolen, that puts a complete halt to their business for periods of time. I hear from shop, from merchants that some of the workers are scared to be alone at night in their shops and to use our parking garages. And so I think we just, we have an issue that is like every other city in the state of New Hampshire, and it's growing. And I think we just need to be really clear that we understand that this is a problem and we are committed to addressing it. So I think adding something as simple as, you know...
Ensure public safety?
Yeah, improving public safety. Through community policing, through, I mean, I don't think it's, police are not in charge of ending this issue. So I don't think, maybe we should lump it. But I do think maybe something as broad as efforts to increase public safety.
Would you, would you feel comfortable with ensure?
Absolutely. Thank you for asking. May I also, a follow-up?
Yes, go ahead.
I think I also do want to state that I am also hearing from community members that are struggling and unhoused with their inability to access certain social services in the community because there is a small but repeat offender population living in the city that is making it unsafe for them to access food insecurity. I hear this among some of the food insecure seniors in the community, those with children, those who are working towards their sobriety. And so I do think that this is a really big issue that we're going to need to tackle. It cannot, we cannot solve this issue through policing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor McAdmore?
I appreciate that, Counselor Sexton. I also appreciate you putting this together. Along with that, I'm not saying how to add it to this, but we are hearing, I'm hearing, people being fearful. And whenever someone is fearful, doesn't feel safe, we need to reassure them or let them know that they're being heard. So along with this, somehow, these meetings, public hearings, we need to have a way to share out what we are discussing, what we're brainstorming, and what we're going to be doing tomorrow, next week, next month. I think that's really important. I'm not saying throw that in here, but I'm saying, let's be thoughtful of how we hear our community and how we share back with them to assure them and to let them know that we are listening and doing something.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Fennessey, now?
Thank you. Now that Counselor Grady Sexton went back to public safety, I did have something that I think we're, we're missing. I think it's a point that I brought up a couple of months ago when we decided to spend some money on efforts to retain our force. So I would really like to have a bullet point with an update on recruitment and retention. You know, we are understaffed, particularly with the police department, but also with fire as well. So I would like to get a report as...
Specifically on public safety?
Correct. Specifically on public safety.
Because it is mentioned in other, in another...
Yeah. I think particularly as it comes to public safety, my concerns are really, I think I raised these a couple of months ago. If we're going to be investing in efforts to retain people, I want to see how that's going so we can understand whether the money we're spending is well-spent and if we need to start reassessing the nature of the services we provide and/or the manner in which we do it, I think we need to have that data.
Counselor Schlosser?
Thank you. I'd like to just explore the issue of the fire, fire stations. My understanding is that the fire department manages its own upkeep, so it's not part of the municipal buildings team in city services. And also that there was a report a couple of years back that all the fire stations are in poor condition by a civil engineering consulting firm. So I don't, and I reviewed the capital improvement plans, and there's really very minor funding for fire station improvement, maybe a half a million dollars or something like that. So it's fairly modest. So I don't know whether this issue of they manage their own buildings, who's, you know, you have fire person, personnel doing the maintenance planning, and I assume they have contractors and others to help them. But I'm concerned that we might be missing something on the page, that the status of the fire stations isn't here, isn't, hasn't been part of our discussion. We know the police station needs upgrade, that's an important facility upgrade. So I don't know, city manager or mayor, what, how to bring that issue forward to make sure that it has eyes on the issue and that whatever, whatever the appropriate decisions are, we, we make them together.
So the history of that is that the fire firefighters, the fire officers requested that they manage their own and maintain their own facilities. So that's what the city council did. And it's really, under the new chief has now asked to take a, to relook at that.
I see.
So we're looking at that right now. But the way it is set up right now is the way that the employees ask for it to be set up. So, and the council agreed to that. So in regards to the stations, the analysis was done, and the question came up regarding, you know, the, an additional station above and beyond what you have now, and...
Also locations too.
In locate, the location analysis. So looking at that, so what you ended up, what the council ended up doing is making some major improvements. You just did a major improvement to Central Station with the new apparatus that is coming. But recognizing that's just a minor fix that is going to hold us over until you can do something with the stations. Then the council discussed it, it was, we really need to focus on the police station first. You can focus on all of them at once. You know, Counselor Foot would just love that. But it, but that, that was the issue, was focus on the police department.
I see.
And then move, move to the fire stations. But you can, you can always move that around.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? Just, oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Fennessey, you're, you're right at that.
Yeah. Just outside of your peripheral. So Counselor Grady Sexton, too, unfortunately.
I would like to add something to the recreation and leisure. One of the things that we've been talking about at RPAC is that particularly as more development has been proposed and is under construction on the east side of town, that one of the things that I'd like for us to consider, and we've talked about, is looking for additional green space, maybe even a new park on the east, on the east side of town, sort of in the area, I would say, east of perhaps the redevelopment of the Steeplegate Mall, sort of in that general area. Obviously, I think we need to take advantage of opportunities for whether it's part of a development that's taking place or whether the city itself has, you know, space that we can utilize. But I think we need to get it on the front burner now so that when those opportunities present themselves, we can develop additional green space.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if, under transportation and utility infrastructure, if I missed something, but what about also fully funding our street paving program? Is that?
That's, that's, that's there is, well, I'm sorry. First, yeah, highway and sidewalk program is the first bullet under transportation and utility.
Highway.
That's our street repaving.
Okay.
Correct? Mr. City Manager?
You could change the word street. The way, the way, we generally use the word highway because it's a highway block grant program that comes down from the state. And then, so the highways would all be your last five roads in the city. So, and, and the sidewalks would go along with that.
May I follow?
We understand it as a street improvement program.
Counselor?
I think that if this is a, I absolutely understand. Thank you for that explanation. I think that if this is a public document, I think most people think of highway as a highway. And so I'd like folks to know that we are fully committed to paving their streets and roads, so maybe local street paving projects.
Just change highway to street?
Might be helpful.
Highway and street. Counselor Horne?
My only comment is around the DEIJB. That is, it's one bullet point, but it really should be a bullet point under pretty much all of these categories. And if there are way, I guess, again, going back to quantify, or you just said those words, but to explain what we are doing around that, or I know we have a committee, committee committed to meeting every month, like the rest of the committees, something with a little bit more explanation around that?
Don't forget that these are, these are supposed to be broad categories and not, and not detail-specific.
Right.
I mean, I anticipate that, you know, that the work of the DEIJB steering committee, when it's up and running, is going to, is going to cover a lot of areas. And I guess at this point, I would hate to restrict that activity. I mean, the, the city manager and I have put together an RFQ. The committee is going to, have we scheduled that meeting yet?
Not officially, but it is tentatively, I thought, March 19th?
Tentatively, yes, my birthday. That's right, March 19th. Tentatively, tentatively, the DEIJB committee is going to meet on the 19th to review the RFQ, send that out, and, and to identify and hire a facilitator to move, start moving the, I want to say project, it's not a project, move the process forward. And so I think that, my intent certainly would be that that initial process, working with the facilitator and with the public, would start to identify the issues that would fall under DEIJB. I'm sorry, Counselor Brown?
Thank you. I just had a clarifying question for Counselor Fennessey. When you were talking about creating a new park, are you thinking of taking like an area that is like encumbering something that's land-water conservation? Because I'm just thinking, if we create a new park, then we're not making any revenue off of that. So are you thinking we would maybe carve up a park that we have presently to encumber it so you could say, take an acre from one park, two acres from one existing park, and then create another green space that's that same size so that we're not, you know, kind of, so that we're not detracting from the tax, taxes?
Counselor, do you want to respond?
Sure. So what we've been talking about is that on that side of town, there's really not a great deal of green space, particularly if the Steeplegate Mall gets redeveloped in the way that, you know, we've seen some of the plan. So part of the conversation has been, there's sort of an area, I would say it's sort of that area and south where there's really no green space. And so what should we be looking to do as a community, whether, whether there's the potential to get additional green space, whether there's some existing rights of way that we might have that could be converted into potential, you know, park space, that sort of thing. It's been very sort of conceptual in nature. It's recognizing that, at least on that side of town, in that area, we've got a, a great deal of housing units going up, there's really no green space, at least at this point in time.
Thank you. Counselor Grady Sexton? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Counselor Grady Sexton, then Counselor Curts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So polite. I, I...
My mother raised me right.
I wanted to follow up on Counselor Horne's recommendation, which I do support. I think that what might be lacking under organizational bullet point, and it says DEIJB, there's just no context there. I'm wondering if we want to get rid of the acronym altogether, state what it is because it's incredibly important. So diversity, equity, inclusion, justice, belonging, implementation. I just think that it, as, as it stands here, it just does not have the context it needs.
I understand.
Yeah. I would say...
Counselor Curts?
Thank you. I was going to, along the same lines, say that we've heard from several folks that communication, while it doesn't have its own bullet point, and I don't know how we would give it one, but we're hearing that we all feel it's extremely important. And as this is a document that we're creating, I think it is worth it to acknowledge the work that is happening. So implementation, you know, we know the RFQ is going to go out, right? Even that amount of information is valuable to share. That's not locking us into anything that we might not be able to do. We know that's happening. I also wanted to acknowledge that as we think about a master plan, and just as I were listening, as I was looking through this, and then with Counselor Fennessey's additional point, there's so much happening along the Loudoun Road corridor that I think it would be wise, from the bridge, right, the Loudoun Road Bridge, all the way to potentially be on Steeplegate, which is the entirety of Loudoun Road, really, it would be valuable for us to be looking at that entire corridor with a vision. Because right now, we have so many projects. We're going to vision Kiwanis. We're talking about, you know, improving the sewer, the airport is changing, a potential additional park, lights at Keach. And I don't want to slow any of those projects, but I think what will happen is it, that area will grow up in a way that's a little bit cobbled together by individual projects without a vision. And that part of the city, which is a very old part of the city and has a wonderful, rich community, that you can't really tell when you're driving down Loudoun Road, right, what the folks who embrace the Heights community and identify in the Heights, you can't get any of that from Loudoun. I think it would be valuable for us, and I know it scares people, like, it just got paved in 2030, or it just got paved, it's not up until 2030. I'm not saying we should tear it up. I'm saying, let's create some energy around looking at it and being mindful of how we want that area of the city to grow up and develop.
Do you think that's really part of the master planning process?
I don't know. You tell me. If you say to me, Judith, that, or Counselor Curts, that's encompassed under master plan, then I'll say, great. And if you say, that would be separate, right? Because we have like numerous master plans. So if this is something where we have to say...
Each master plan supersedes the next.
Okay. But I mean, I feel like there's like a transportation, you know, plan, there's a bike ped plan, there's a Parks and Rec. So wherever it belongs, because it does encompass all these different things, right? Economic development, traffic, public transportation, pedestrian infrastructure, parks. I just want to make sure that we have a, a group of folks really creating a vision for it because it's deserving of it. And it does tie into DEIJB. It's a large, growing community. It's a large portion of our New American community, and it's got a lot of potential.
I, I appreciate your enthusiasm. And, but I think that's, that is... I, I appreciate your enthusiasm. And, but I think that's, that is part of the master planning process, is to create an overall vision for how different sections of the city.
Okay.
How, how we should be developing them, what we should be looking for.
Thank you.
Very good. Mayor Protam, then Counselor Schlosser, then Counselor Foote.
Thank you, Honorable. And I wanted to say what you just said, because if we want to make Concord as a destination, we have to have, and when I said destination, you lay out when it comes to community economic development. And really, as Counselor Kurtz said earlier, I think transportation, public safety, and recreation and leisure, Concord as a destination covers everything. Have to be safe to come to an area. We have to have public transportation to go to an area. I think I'm very excited to see this new committee that is going to be implemented, so that we can look Concord as a whole. And you saw me when you were talking about the airport. I'm more, I think, excited about this project than anything up in the Heights, because I think, even in Laconia, and seeing how the little airport of Laconia was handling people and how people are learning, I get it, they are on lakes, people come to have some good time on the lake, but also they have that avenue where they have concerts and stuff. But I think as a capital city, it's important for us to look at all those things and make sure that those are part of what we do. My caution, and of course, when we met earlier, when we were talking about the airport, the airport committee asked about the light at Keach Park, and we answered all their questions, and they seemed to be happy about what the explanation that they were given here, when it comes to the design of the light and the type of light that they are using, because that's part of safety when people fly also. So, those were answered. Remember what I'm talking about? Okay, good. So, I think Concord as a destination is key.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Schlosser?
I'd like to just consider some conversation around the revolving loan fund. My understanding is that involves about $1.7 million, and there's as many as 28 or so entities that we loan to. Some of them are individuals, and some of them are small businesses and that sort of thing. I'm wondering if we could increase that, optimize that, because the city has both cash on hand, as much as 10 or 20 million dollars that it has to manage at any one time. We have, some of our other funds have excess reserves. And if we thoughtfully planned or laddered, like a bond ladder, how we loan out money, I'm wondering if we could increase that almost, like, from 1.7 million to something like 10 million dollars. The, the concept is to invest, we've got, I'm sure our finance team is investing in very safe bonds, or whatever they do, but investing in, in Concord, putting that money to work here. My understanding is that the revolving loan fund has a payback rate of about 97% or something. It's a high. I mean, they vet the applicants and stuff like that to make sure that they're thoughtful. And we could have the money both going out and coming back in in a regular way. And we could really magnify the benefit of those, of our excess funds and reserves for the benefit of the community, if we had a thoughtful way to try to increase the money available in the revolving loan fund. So, that's a, we have a bullet here for revolving loan fund program, and I don't know if that means just sort of continue it as it's been for the last period, or really try to think strategically, how can we use our financial heft, which is considerable, really, for the benefit of this community? So, that would be an idea maybe to consider.
Did I see Mr. Walsh make a motion? Did you? Okay, good. That's certainly something that we can look at. I mean, generally, the revolving loan fund is used for nonprofits engaged in, in, in projects that benefit the community, but also very small, low-interest loans to low-income people, many of whom live in manufactured housing, who have a, a, a repair problem, you know, a mold problem. They need a new furnace. They need a new roof. And their design, the revolving loan fund in that regard is designed to keep them in their, in their home. And you're right, the repayment rate is extremely high, although there are some people who don't. And, you know, but, but it is a very useful tool. In my regard, going back to homelessness, this is one of the ways that we, as a city, keep people in their houses, by ensuring, or keep people under a roof, by ensuring that their homes are safe and, and heated and, you know, healthy. So.
Well, I, I guess my point is, there's nothing here but just revolving loan fund. What's, the aim would be to really optimize, and it's obviously, we don't want to have excess risk, put our reserve funds at excess risk, but in a thoughtful way, put them to work in our community and for the need, for the needs of low income, or nonprofits, or whomever might, businesses who might need it.
So, I think that'd be a good policy question for you to have, because in reality, the revolving loan fund program has been financed by grants that the city has received and been paid back over time, right? So, you're not risking taxpayer dollars. What you're talking about would be risking taxpayer dollars. So, that would obviously affect our bond rating and our, our interest income.
Yep.
So, again, which then would increase taxes, because you'd have less income coming in. So, I think it's something I would not be in favor of, but it's worth, it's worth discussing, because I think there's plenty of dollars that we have out there. We, we have a goal of trying to maximize the amount of dollars that we have out there. And we've done, with a 97% payback rate, we've done an excellent job without risking the taxpayers' money. And I don't think we've turned away many, many folks who have come along and asked for dollars. And we do, we've done a lot of gap financing with projects. We've tried not to compete with banks. So, if we're, if we're doing loans that get up at a bank level, then essentially, we're, we're taking the, the business away from banks. Again, I mean, I could be convinced, but again, I don't, I don't get a vote. I don't get a vote. But, I mean, right now, you have probably one of the best revolving loan fund programs in the state. Risking more money would be, I don't know if it's a good idea.
Did you want to speak to that, because I have Counselor Foote next?
I do, but, and just a very.
Go ahead.
Just in a very broad way, and this is a, I think, a policy question, a broader policy, policy question. And quite honestly, I, I get the, the feeling, the new council is going to be eager to engage in a lot of social programs that cost the city money. And as a council, we're going to have to really wrestle with the idea of, do we do more than the big four? Fire, police, roads, right? How, how far beyond that mission do we get? And I don't have the answer, but I think that's a broader question, and this, this is a good example of that question.
Counselor Foote?
I've been to one CDAC meeting, and it was very rewarding to see and vote on something that's going to, that's going to help people. And it was, it's just, it's a great program, and the city should be very proud of that. I've got a number of different things I wanted to talk tonight about, but one of the things, I'm glad it was high on the list, is, is city employees and retention. And I'm not sure what this looks like, but I'm not sure the city has longevity-type incentives for employees. Those are the type of things that, you know, send a symbolic message, I think, to employees that, you know, this, this council appreciates their efforts. So, I would, and I know, there's a lot, like I said, I think about dollar signs every time I go to any kind of meeting. But I think it's, it's, I think it's, it's something that should be considered for this body to, and I don't know what it looks like. Is it, you know, $500 a year after five years, or whatever it is? But those are the type of things, I think, employees of all avenues really appreciate. And then, lastly, we, we, we talked about it a bit with the, the pump station, and really think about it, all development. I got a phone call this morning from somebody from Farmwood, and we had a conversation. He was concerned that, and he was concerned that our impact fees are only applied to certain types of construction in the city. And so, it's my understanding that, is it residential, that folks that are, will realize the impact fee, and then the commercial, and all other development, development does not realize any sort of impact fee? Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
I, I really think, you know, we're, we're pinching pennies, and I really think that we should look at that. And there's going to be people that are going to say that, well, if we don't incentivize business from coming to the city, then, you know, they're going to turn and go somewhere else. I can tell you that I've been part of probably, probably a billion dollars in infrastructure and economic development where I work. And we, we, we helped the process move along, but I don't recall ever incentivizing any kind of development where I've been. I think we should really consider, because every time we're talking about all of this, that we're just reallocating the responsibility to the taxpayer. And there's a lot of folks in this community that are hurt, elderly people, young working families. And I think we need to be cognizant of that. And if we can, we can, we can have good economic development in this community, but I think that we want partners that are, that have shared values, and all want to contribute for this community. And I think developers should want that same with us as well.
Thank you. Counselor Brown?
I just want to thank my colleagues, Counselor Foote and Counselor Schlosser. I agree wholeheartedly with what you both just said. With Counselor Foote's experience, I think we could do well to look at best practices from other municipalities. And if that's impact fees for commercial developers, I think that would be smart to look at. And I also really appreciate Counselor Schlosser recognizing how important it is to invest in our residents. And I, I hope that the Economic Development Committee really looks at that. And I would support finding some way that we can increase the revolving loan fund program, because I think if we can support those at the lowest rung, whether it be creating safe streets, sidewalks, pathways for them to get to work, or if it is like a roof on a mobile home, I think that should be our focus, how we can support them. So, I just want to thank my counselors, fellow colleagues.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kurtz, then Counselor Grady Sexton.
Thank you. I propose a bullet under Transportation and Utility Infrastructure for public transportation. We've heard a lot about how there is a need for increased or improved public transportation, and this could be as simple as buses running to city council meetings, which I know came up a lot during the campaign. But addressing public transportation affects all of our residents, including those who can't afford a car. It helps us deal with issues of parking in the city center by allowing us to have people park further out and take buses in, and contributes to what we're hoping to do in terms of Concord being a destination. So, strong public transportation is an essential piece of healthy city infrastructure.
I'm, I'm happy to add it.
Thank you.
With the caveat that the public transportation system is run by Bellnet, Merrimack, Community Action Program.
Right. But as a council, we have to engage with them to try to get more of what we want for our city.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I've heard from two or three counselors now that there is real interest and value in communicating with the public. And I think that it, I would propose that we add another bullet point that talks about communication in general, and our interest in enhancing efforts to solicit input from the community and to inform the public of our efforts. I think that the council traditionally has done a good job of this, but I think there's always room for improvement. Under organization? Perhaps under organizational?
That's what I thought. Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Schlosser, then the Mayor Protam.
This is a question, on the finance technology, technology infrastructure projects, what are some examples of our current infrastructure, technology priorities and the work we're doing now? I'm not familiar with that.
I'll turn to the city manager on that.
There is a, you've just got to notice that the last part of the Enterprise Resource Planning Initiative is underway for the, the tax billing. We've done that. You're going to be faced pretty soon with, we're in the mid-20 years of the cabling system that we put in place for, for fiber, for the schools, and the, all the city buildings. That's going to run several million dollars to be able to recable everything throughout the city. In the past, you were able to finance that primarily with city dollars, but in the future, it's going to be city and school, school districts working for that. So, there'll be that, and then the whole idea of staffing associated with that, and the maintenance of that. The, all the technology related to what goes on with the library and the systems that they have in place. So, it's, it, it has, and you're going to see many of those pieces in particularly the fire alarm systems, there's the whole dispatch system for police and fire. So, all those pieces are, all the technology pieces. Because if you, give you an example, you know, if you end up doing something with a new police station, do you leave the police tower and communication systems here, or is that all relocated to a new facility? How does that work back and forth with communications? We're part of a whole dispatching system, which I think is about 27 different entities for, for EMS. So, how does that all work with the towers? So, we have towers all around the county associated with that. So, there's all those individual pieces, and you'll see them when you're going through your capital budget. So, it's making sure that we keep up with those, keep reinvesting in those, because if, if we don't, then you start to have all kinds of problems, particularly, particularly related to public safety and response times. So, it's, 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 it's primarily public safety, but a lot of it does have to do with communications related to all the departments, being that we are spaced all around the community. And you figure, you know, take water, wastewater systems, it's a good example. Those used to be, you know, three shifts of folks.
Right.
You know, now it's, now it's one shift, working, you know, but everything's, it can be done remotely. So, it's all, it's keeping up with all that.
Thank you.
If I just have a quick follow-up on that?
Yeah.
Isn't a lot of what we need to do from a cybersecurity standpoint, trying to protect our infrastructure?
That's a part of it. For example, we've received grants to do, there are grants, particularly for the water system. So, we're able to do a lot of pieces there. You've seen some of the threats that have gone on from foreign countries that are trying to tap into different systems around the country. So, we do, we're, we are able to keep up with that. There's, and obviously, all the monitoring pieces that, that go along with that for, for what happens to the wastewater system. So, cybersecurity is, is a big part of it. And, you know, we do have a lot of sensitive information that we, when we're dealing, particularly with the building systems, and with people who pay with credit card information, you know, when they come to, whether it's car registrations or anything like that. So, how do you protect their data? We want to make sure that there, you see this on a regular basis. Some organizational community actually gets hacked, and that information is out there available to, we, we're always trying to stay out in front of that, making sure that, that doesn't happen for us.
Counselor Fennessey read my mind. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. And I think they asked a question, and thank you for clarifying, because that was one of my questions, when we talk about technology, what are the plan? But it seemed like you laid out very well, and cybersecurity should be something that should be a priority. But I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to Counselor Grant, Section, and Counselor Horne, because I wanted to say, the diversity, equity, inclusion, justice, and belonging were just standing there, so there was no meat into it. But I think to define it and say implementation does make sense, because I put it the minute I said here. Thank you for clarifying that. That took something off.
Counselor Foote?
I, I need to expand on what I said previously about economic development. I, I, having said what I said about incentivizing, I think that the economic engine in this city is between Horseshoe Pond and South Main Street. city is between Horseshoe Pond and South Main Street, along the Store Street corridor. And I think we should be, this community should be very open for investment in that quarter. As Mayor Boule once told me, is, you know, we can't go into the city, we can't, you know, develop the floodplain across the river, but we can go up on Store Street. And he was absolutely correct and those are words that I think were well received by me and I think it's, I think it would be good for the community, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Todd and then Counselor Horn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am interested in adding an item that could be called Historic Preservation Initiatives or Historic Preservation Opportunities. Basically, what I'm thinking, and some of you may recall, I floated this idea several years ago at one of the priority setting sessions. It didn't really have legs, but I think that a lot of the, there's a lot of opportunity there. And the idea would be to sort of advance historic preservation as a guiding principle of community and economic development efforts that we have and then an integral part of an overall strategy to promote economic growth. If we think about a lot of the issues that we've been discussing here tonight, I think that this really does touch on a lot of them. So I'm thinking about tourism, I'm thinking about the Chamber of Commerce, who as we all know during the last municipal election made a lot about the fact that the city really doesn't do a direct investment in tourism. But I think that if we are able to continue to protect our valuable historic infrastructure, that we know that tourists are drawn to communities with older character and that they stay longer and spend more. So that touches on that. It also touches on green initiatives, that, you know, historic preservation is aligned with sustainability goals. You know, older buildings have better grade materials, they're, that last longer, designed to take advantage of natural light and ventilation, ventilation. They require less non-renewable energy sources. And of course, you're avoiding, you know, putting demolition debris into landfills. And then this really historic design standards result in higher quality renovations and so that it really contributes more in the long run to the community's tax base. And then finally, I think historic properties really tell the story of us and our shared history through the built environment. And so there are opportunities to further the DEIJB efforts along those lines as well. So I don't, I don't look really at historic preservation as like, you know, freezing everything in place exactly, you know, so we're not going to be colonial Williamsburg, but you know. But it's, it's, you know, just, you know, like you're revisiting a certain period of place in a certain period of time. So there's a recognition that there's a need for some organic change that could take place, but how do we, how do we be sensitive to that? And I'm thinking also just a couple of recent examples, which we're all familiar with, the public reaction to the Norris House, which if you've seen that online, it's pretty strongly in favor of finding a way to save that property. So are there ways to incentivize but also assist developers? Because we know Steve Dupree has been trying to do this, to save this property for some time. How can we do that to sort of achieve really what I view are the community's goals? And I also just want to recognize the good work that Heritage Commission and especially Counselor Kretovic have been doing, but I'm just thinking that more could be done perhaps to assist their efforts. So I just put that out there as a possibility. And I don't know where it would fall, but maybe it would be under.
Probably, probably a community and economic.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, you know. And I also just wanted to comment that implementing EDAC, I would think that EDAC could have, you know, to touch on this as well perhaps in some ways or provide assistance as they start to look at and do their work in terms of the economic piece of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Horn.
Sticking with that, I just had a question. The economic development website overhaul, is that the City of Concord?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yeah, the city has, I don't know whether Mr. Walsh wants to expand on that, but the city does have a kind of, I would call it a nascent or an economic development website.
I think the mayor is being overly generous in his comments.
Dourmend, let me say dourmend.
We have a website that needs to be redone and it's on Mr. Thompson's list to do.
So that's focused particularly on just economic development.
Is it but part of City of Concord websites? Or totally different tourism?
It'll be part of it. That'll be part of the city website, but the focus really is on that the city staff is working on a update to our existing website. That will be done in a bottom line.
Oh, wow.
Wonderful. Thank you.
It would be essentially for those people who are interested in.
Paying your tax bill or, you know, dog licensing or something like that. That's the city, that's the city.
That's the city website.
The one Matt's talking about is particularly, particularly related to business development.
So businesses that are interested in coming to do business in the city, they get learned about how to do it, who to talk to, who to contact. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Just looking at the first bullet, finance and technology. In terms of balanced budget, I'm wondering if other, I routinely hear from folks that are feeling as if their taxes are prohibitive and I know, you know, Counselor Foot just expressed that he too is hearing from people who are seniors that are feeling they can no longer live in the community or folks that want their children to live in the community who can't afford rent or, or, you know, are incapable of purchasing a home. I wonder if we would want to add balanced budget and tax relief and that of course could mean economic development. There's many ways to provide tax relief, but I'd be interested in, in advancing that as a specific goal.
I guess I have some concerns over using the phraseology tax relief because I think that that can mean different things to different people. I mean, certainly we want to minimize the tax burden on our taxpayers and as the city manager puts his budget together, I think he's always tried to make sure that, that is the case, that we minimize the impact.
Would you be open to saying that? Would others be open to saying just that?
I'm sorry?
Would, I'm wondering if others would be open to saying just that, what you, what you just said, minimizing.
Minimizing, yeah, yeah, minimizing. I think that that would be a more appropriate, yeah, and maybe less, less prone to misunderstanding.
Mm-hmm.
Counselor Kurtz.
It's a communication piece. And so you feel from your experience that you have an understanding and respect for Mr. Spell, which I do as well from my little time here, but it's about communicating to the public that it is a concern, it is in our minds and not assuming that they know that we care about the tax burden, right? So.
Counselor Horn.
I would agree with Counselor Grady Sexton a hundred percent. I think it's important that we're communicating, if this is a public document, that it's important to us and that we're standing behind trying to be mindful of spending the tax dollars. However, verbiage, I think it's very important.
Thank you. Any other?
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Just building off my, the fellow counselors, Grady Sexton and Counselor Horn, that I think we should have those communications with the school board because the tax impact from the school board decision, we're both pulling from the same pocket. So I think when we look at, you know, minimizing taxes or tax relief, that we are including a conversation with the school board as we, we look at that, that impact on the taxpayer.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kretovic.
Can I talk briefly?
Yes.
I don't have a whole lot to say because I don't have a voice. I handed out something a little bit different than Mayor Champlin did, going back to what was done many years ago, in particular at a time when economies were tight and we were concerned about impacted taxpayers. We went with a very simplified format of our council priorities that were very high bullet items without the detail, not that the detail doesn't matter because devil's in the details. This overwhelms people. They think we're doing all of this and when we're talking about communication, we're not doing all of this. There's no way we're doing all this over the next two years. It won't happen. So I tried to just put things in buckets, kind of like Mayor Champlin has, you know, in the bullet points, not the open bullets that are here. And I focused on high performing organization to really address things that are related to being an employer of choice. As Counselor Foot had pointed out, the ways in which we attract or retain our employees and give them longevity incentives for staying with us when we're at a point where it's very difficult to fill some of our vacant positions, making a commitment to our compensation salary report, updating the city website so that people can apply for jobs, but also we have had many conversations with regards to diversity, equity, inclusion, justice, belonging, to update the access to language preferences on our websites so that it's upfront for people to find and can choose their language of choice, not hidden at the bottom, but the website overhaul is in and of itself a priority. And then ways in which we could get volunteers to serve on our boards and committees more readily without having to go through a laborious process, just being able to go online and fill out a simple application. These are the boards I'm, I'm interested in so that Mayor Champlin can follow up and those individuals can come to us. The improving infrastructure, it's so wide based that there's so many things that could be included under that. Again, I didn't want to be specific, but just basically at very high level, our roads, our bridges, our facilities, technology, equipment, it wouldn't matter to me if it was police, fire, general services, or the library, all have needs, but not all needs can be met. The social determinants of health, what I really focused on here was more of things that are in the community, that we hear from the community on a day-to-day basis, being public safety. Probably one of the most prevalent feedback that we get when Counselor McNamara talked about fear and Counselor Grady Sexton talked about the real challenges that people have right now when confronting people that are homeless. We received an email about how to manage people that are having a mental health crisis. Those are all things that cut into how safe our community is. We could be the safest city in the entire state and it doesn't mean anything if you're afraid to walk to your car. So I think that there's multiple ways that we could be addressing that, again, without being specific for homelessness beyond the Public Safety Committee and the work that they're doing there to start quantifying this data, there's a subcommittee to look specifically at homelessness. And already in the first meeting, there was some really brilliant ideas that are coming forward to look at instead of focusing on housing first, to focus on functional zero, which is what our very own Ms., her name's going to escape me and I don't have a lot of, thank you. No. No. Karen.
Karen. Ms. Williams.
Ms. Williams, thank you so much. I apologize, I didn't mean to break protocol there. But she talked about getting ahead of the project, problem. We need to know when people are going to be entering homelessness, not when they're homeless. When they're homeless, we lose track of them. We don't know where they are. We don't know how to provide them resources. We're trying to like follow a circuit around the city to find out where somebody is. How do we help them now? If we can keep them from being homeless, that means we're going to be in a better position to help them. We can help with food, we can help with utilities, we can help with certain things that happen in functioning a home. What we can't do is help as much when they're actually out on the street. I put addressing racism, discrimination and violence in our community with actionable, measurable items as my DEIJB because I think it's more than what we do as the employer side on the city, which we do already have in place a discrimination, diversity, equity, inclusion, justice, belonging statement as an employer. What we don't have is how we address these things in our community and I think that that's what the community is looking for, that when we have an issue of racism where someone in some, a protected class is being targeted, that we have a way collectively as the council to address that beyond just a police department responding to something. We need to be able to say this isn't tolerated in our community and this is what we're going to do to support our organizations within the community around that. I think it's a bigger conversation than just the city and it's not in the city administration, it's on the hands of our city council in our community. I'm running low here. Employment opportunities, really the tax base expansion as far as having people live, work, play in our community means we need to have businesses that can stay here and thrive here so that employees can work here so that we don't need to have people that get in that single vehicle and drive themselves to work downtown when they could have taken public transportation or if we had a good infrastructure for bike and sidewalks, they could have found a better way, more sustainable to get there. I just think it's a bigger view. Clean air and water, everyone should want clear air and water. It's probably the two things we can't live without. Try holding your breath and tell me how it works out. Continued partnerships with Second Start Boys and Girls Club and other community organizations. Education is such a highly important part of our social determinants of health, but we don't have anything to say with the school district, but there are ways we can be supporting adults in our community, like these partnerships that we already have to expand learning opportunities, English as a second language, working with our library and our Parks and Recreation Department in those areas. So that's about the most you're going to get onto me today. It was really just more high view, knowing that as economies of scale get harder, spending dollars get harder as well, anybody could put anything that's on these other lists here and it allows flexibility of our city administration to know this project can't be a priority right now. We don't have the funding, we don't have the tax capacity of our residents to fund this. It's going to get pushed back in my two years. Thank you.
Counselor. Counselor Todd.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I think Counselor Kretovic brings up a good overall point here, which is, I know that if you look on the city's website, it does, there is something 2022, 23 City Council Priorities, and there's a list of, it's basically, it's seven items under Equity and Responsible Fiscal Management, and then there's Ongoing Initiatives and there's four items under that. I just wanted to ask you, Your Honor, what was your intention in terms of actually publishing for public consumption, a list? Was it to actually put this, make this whole thing available or were you going to also provide some kind of a condensed version?
It was essentially a condensed version that I was planning on, not this whole list. I mean, this, this whole laundry list is a bit overwhelming, but it would be the basic areas of focus that we would have, similar to what's already on the website of the past council. Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Counselor Kurtz.
With that point of clarification, I'd just like to thank Counselor Kretovic. There's a lot of excellent language in this, so I start a few things like a system of systems, talking about infrastructure. Also, Counselor Kretovic drew attention to improving the community involvement on boards and committees, which has come up quite a bit, so it would be great to address that as well. And maybe the new city website does already address that. I don't know if that's encompassed and what we will see in the next month, I hope so. Anyway, perhaps drawing on some of this language would be useful when consolidating.
Some of your language?
Absolutely. Oh, I should have asked you that first. Steel shamelessly.
Just that you're always hoarse.
I know. This is the second time.
Mayor Pro Tem, Suku.
Thank you, and I will second what you just said. I think reading this, the priority, especially under the social determinant of health, I think it's clear, it's clean, and you really hit the point because as elected officials, those are, should, I don't say are, but should be everyone priority. Nice job. Nice job.
Counselor Fantasy.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Kretovic. Thank you for giving as much of a voice as you could for tonight.
I'll have nothing tomorrow, but it's okay.
I want to thank you because there are, I will say there's a couple of things on your list that, that we probably should make sure that we highlight. One thing I was going to say is I, I do, at least from my perspective, prefer how the mayor has sort of set this up, understanding that sort of the, the high-level bullet points are, are going to be sort of the categories that we're following, but I do like having the individual projects or initiatives or ideas, at least for me, conceptually, to be able to track and hopefully to have city staff track throughout the year. I see these items, not necessarily as things that we're going to do within the next two years, but as, you know, other counselors who've sat around this table for a number of years, there's a lot of things we think about in year one that we may not actually get to until year five or year six, but it's really important to keep track of those things because as we do other things, we need to keep in mind what's in the future. And so from my perspective, I like having sort of the specifics about what we should keep in mind, even if we're not doing anything necessarily in year one or year two.
I'd just like to step in and just remind the council that every quarter, city staff reports. And that's kind of where the subbullets come in, where, when you read the quarterly report. Super. Well, this has been a great work session. I really, let me say, as mayor, I deeply appreciate all the engagement, all the ideas, all the interaction that the council has engaged in tonight. And it's hard to believe that in just another week, we'll be back here having fun again. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. Mayor Pro Tem, not Mayor Pro Tem, a motion made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by, seconded by Counselor Kurtz. And Counsel Kretovic. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I just have it. Thank you. We'll see you next week.